Nobody mind, I just checked with the board to see if it would be okay. You've been talking about maybe opening with a prayer. I got this prayer from Lake County, they do this traditionally to open all of their meetings. And so, I wanted to say this prayer, so if you wouldn't mind, you can stand. And so, "Grant us, O Lord, light to our understanding, prudence in our investigating, foresight in our planning, sincerity in our delivering, the grace to follow truth in our judgment, help us to be moved in our decision, either by fear nor self-interest, and to do our ability, our work faithfully. May we respect the authority vested in us, for thou art the source of all of our authority, and may we use it in our directives, for the common good and for thy honor and glory." Amen. Amen. Thank you.
I have a couple things to report on. On April 27th, for transit, I sent to the rep designation of Robert Santos, part-time driver number 2210-1, effective April 21st, 2017. And then, yesterday, May 1st, for community economic development, I approved and executed the State of Ohio Development Services Agency Office of Community Development request for release of funds, RROF, and certification for federally funded state projects for, in regards of the community development block grant program incoming for Montville project in the honor of $150,000. For the commissioners, I approve and execute the agreement with Chardon Area Chamber of Commerce for use of county parking lots during the annual car show on July 9th, 2017, the rain date being Sunday, July 16th, 2017. And finally, at the FDA office, I concur with the Muntz and Township trustees in not requesting a hearing on the liquor license requested by 10700 Mayfield Road LLC, located at 10700 Mayfield Road, Chardon, Department Number C, N W 6548352. That's the file that knows, goes in there, files knows, there's one in there, that's where it's parked right there.
Okay?
Sure. The Sheriff's Office is requesting the board approve, effective April 18th, 2017. The Sheriff's Office is requesting the board approve, effective April 18th, 2017.
Make a motion? Yes.
Okay. Hey. We have travel and compensation for the audit, government services, public company in the board's office. A contract with Philip Miller Construction in the amount of $35,714 for concrete work here for 470 parking lot. We have vouchers, a payment of $7,970 to Kershberg Roofing, for apartment aging, for building repairs. Payments of $19,128.50 and $22,492.50 to Junction Buick for JFS, for new vehicles. A payment of $173,000, $573, $566,000 to Jack Gibson Construction for water resources for Russell Park wastewater treatment plant upgrades. And a payment of $18,369 to Mission Communications for Water Resources, for Mission telemetry units service maintenance. Any questions for Ann or Dave?
Good one.
So, you had a reimbursement for, for the sheriff, the township of Chardon, for a tower. I'm assuming that's a payment for Redford Tower, right?
Yes. Yes.
It's Chardon number?
No, it's a county tower, but there was a, when that tower was constructed, there was agreement reached between the commissioners at the time, which creates me, in Chardon Township, they would receive revenue from that tower along with the county.
Oh, I see, so it's a county tower on Chardon property.
Right on over, right at the town hall, you can see it.
Because most of our towers, it stuck out to me, because those four towers are all, we don't see a payment for any of those.
Right. That was arranged with Chardon Township.
All right, there's your question.
Yeah, yeah. We'll finalize it next week, because next week, they can vote on it.
We're gonna have the signature financials, because she has a wonderful signature.
Good morning, how are you?
We concluded the negotiations with the union, and we're just looking for an hours before we complete the package.
Feel a little grayer since this thing started. Listen to more air.
Both of you, yeah.
So, this is a three-year contract, and it's been signed, and you got a copy?
Yeah. Sheriff's Office is requesting the board now as completion of negotiation, the way the collective party agreed to have control of the association in the Sheriff's Office.
Make a motion?
Yes.
Can you?
The first one is me, the young lady, because last year Sierra Shortridge, she did such a great job, we kept her on seasonal leave, or part-time seasonal, so we're looking to transition her back to full-time summer help. And the second change is, we do have a, just a regular part-time employee, Molly Reos, she's an assistant site coordinator, she's been part-time since her retirement with us in the summer, we decide to get her full-time to help us cover all the different vacations that people come. That shouldn't affect anything, that offends the insurance law department, and that now.
Okay.
The Department of Aging is requesting the board, through the classification of the children from part-time, to the effective days of 2017, period of $10.00 per hour, for 18 weeks maximum of 500 hours. The Department of Aging is requesting the board, increasing the hours of Maggie Reos per time assistance at 48, roughly 40 hours, for the period of 2017, 2026, 2017.
Make the motion?
Yes.
Thank you, Jessica. Bye-bye now.
And he has... This is just housekeeping on the credit card.
They are applying for a visa to check card, for travel purposes, and a credit card authorization for allowing that application to be sent. The Department of Emergency Services is requesting the board, for submission of a credit card application to check card, for use for travel purposes.
Make a motion?
Yes.
Do you don't currently have a card?
Not for travel.
No? I'm surprised.
They never had one for travel, so I...
Good morning.
Good morning. Anyway, Stan, morning, I have an opportunity to meet this department. I'm just trying to give you some guidance for an official contact, to review that. The auction began in the eastern office, each at 6:00, and I would need you to make a statement, because at least, we know all that here, 470, it's a great way to liquidate on your outstanding assets, what you're going to ask, also, simplest, a good amount of money. In the, when I say that, we send out a distribution list of items to a bunch of different people, and those items are available for transfer during, for one week of being bought, these for other items, and then those things get transferred in the department. We've estimated that, since beginning of auction, it's $278,000, approximately. Anything that doesn't get kind spread off that list, gets listed on the auction for 10 of those, plus the three listings, any unsold items either get sent back to the department for second disposals, or keep it for future. We get a lot of bidders from all of the countries, like people from Alaska, then potential bidders, we've had bidders from California before, so we're able to reach a very broad number of people. Between 2006 and 2017, we had a $1,000,000 auction sales, and 2016, we made over $110,000. There's no money spent on our gov deals, agreement with them, except for our own labor, obviously. Any, any event that gov is backed for any of that, 7.5% gov is due, is paid by the airport, is positive in the general fund, and then basically puts back to gov as well. So, if there's a limit to terms outside of that. So, the contract that I'm wanting to do, the three-year contract, nothing changed on the contract, still the same contract, decided, bidders fee, that we certainly make it back from the airport, so. Is that in the hand?
So, so, when you list something under, does it cost you anything?
No, we don't get, like, we don't get charged for it, literally, the only, the only payment that we make comes from the bidder, no certain gov's, after it's positive, they have to pay.
See, when we started this, they used to have a county auction once a year, gather up all this stuff, put it by the barn down by the county home. And then, 2006, from the Berhetti, one of her special projects, when she was working, after she was hired, we created an auction website on the county website, we used to call it Gbay, unofficially. And that didn't cost us anything, but it was just on the local county website, so the only people that were bidding were pretty much the local people, the majority of the county. Well, over time, upgrades of the website, they weren't able to maintain that software, that bidding software anymore, so we looked around, and gov deals seemed to be the way to go, because they allow us just to take that fee, and that's added to the purchasers' fee, and now, as Canada says, people around the country are able to see our stuff, and our stuff.
So, is the player piano going on gov deals, or on the local auction?
It's actually, it's on gov deals.
Yeah, there's no local auction, it's just, it's just gov deals now.
That's the question, and I think your response was, it's going to be on gov deals.
Yeah, it is on gov right now.
It's a great player piano, if anybody wants a little bit of the project, the soundboard still sounds good. It's kind of got a lot of reels or paper. I wanted to get it, my wife will own it. Instead, I didn't need any more projects, project for counties. That's a great player.
The maintenance department is requesting the board, through authorized the president of the board to execute the gov deals, unlike, on the one or two, which we don't have any gov deals, for the preparation of the maintenance office, or for the period based on 2017, to be made for, to go 20, 20, commission rate of 7.5% to be paid by the buyer, and the commission stated in the motion.
Make the motion? Yes. Yes. All right. All right, thank you. Could you mind if I take a second to represent, Glenn Burnick, and the maintenance department?
Okay.
And our staff, and everybody who helped out on our float in the April best this weekend. It was a fantastic job, and they represented our county really well, and they're great, and so I want to thank Glenn, and the entire staff, and all of our staff, for all the work that they did, doing that. It was a good thing, just building all the departments, and we've been great, and stuff. We threw a lot of candy, dentists are really happy with us.
Really followed you and throw their toothbrushes.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. Yeah, because we're throwing the toothbrushes back.
That's right.
To this, we're throwing the toothbrushes down, because we're talking about.
How you doing? Good. This is just a correction on the change order that you approved last week, the number was incorrect on it, you approved change order number four, it was actually change order number five. I'm making that correction.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board, make a motion, effective 25, 2017, correcting the change order direction number five, to re-approve the next future order number five, increasing the contract for Jack Gibson Construction, for additional G5, like, for the water treatment plant, a rate of, an amount of $5,034.13.
Make the motion? Yes. I've got a question, let me call you after, because I'm putting, I've had some people call me the last couple of days on a project, expansion project that's going on, services. So, I've had people calling me at home, concerned about that, and asking what to do, so I'm not, I'm fine. Thank you. Bye-bye, Derek.
Again, a sickly donation, as we are administering this new policy, these little things keep popping up, and what happens is, when a person, in order to qualify to receive a sickly donation, they have to have no more of their own paid time of any time. But, when we transfer the time from the donator to the person who's receiving it, they become active again, and when they become active, then they do earn their own sick time for that, and it messes up the amounts. And so, we needed to eliminate the phrase, minimum of eight hours, because what would happen is, they would get, like, 6.2 of the eight hours, it's just SW, she wanted to hurt me. So, what we asked was that we just remove that phrase, so that people give the minimal amount that matches up with what that person has earned, with what has been donated, and we're for it to come out right, and we're not banking hours.
The Sheriff's Office is requesting the board, approve the revision of the sickly donation policy, if six point one six A, reject any personal policy, if this year manual, to remove the phrase, minimum of eight hours, as requiring minimum donation, treaters banking hours, which is number 11, elsewhere.
Make the motion? Yes. Yes.
I think you did.
Thank you. You didn't have her with you.
You know, she blew her wad already, so, what are you gonna do?
I'd like to make a comment, going clear back to the beginning, right after the Pledge of Allegiance, and skip to the prayer. I was watching a video on the internet the other day, taken in the House of Representatives in Washington, DC, and they were doing the Pledge of Allegiance, which they do every morning, and a prayer, is the same as we went through here. And believe it or not, there were so many that were not even standing for the pledge, let alone the prayer, of our representatives, it was disgusting. So, what we're doing here is, thank you.
I'll just add to that. All right, thank you. Okay, Dale, did you have something?
Yeah, I was gonna mention to the board, as you recall, went through the financials here a week or so ago, to do a purchase order, encumbrance, for a $6,000 payment to the Community Improvement Corporation. Community Improvement Corporation, I believe, was founded around 1963, I think, is the number I heard, and it was, was put in place because the law allowed for issuance of bonds through CICs for more economic development. And so, early in the JAGA CIC's life, there were a number of economic development projects that were facilitated by having that in place. And we've maintained our CIC, and there's certain things legally that have to be done to maintain an active CIC, because, under certain circumstances, it can be a very viable mechanism to accomplish economic development activity. So, the idea of the encumbrance was to do some research, have some research conducted, and also, talk to some of the people that have been around the CIC since its inception. There's a guy by name, Ken Krosik, who's an attorney, who's actually, was the very first county administrator in JAGA's county history, so I've had him before responding to our Ken Krosik. But, he's been associated with the CIC, I think, since its very inception. So, part of this process, or part of what the expectation was of the commissioners agreeing to encumber some money to be given to the CIC, is so that we could use their documentation, some work with Mr. Krosik, to kind of put down in writing, how the CIC operates, what are the potential, future possibilities for the CIC, so that it's maintained as a viable economic development tool. So, I guess what I'm asking, going forward, I'd like to recommend to the board, that you go ahead and follow up that encumbrance that is being handed to the CIC, but I need some input from the board as to what level of oversight they're gonna have over the CIC as they do this piece of.
So, let me offer you, we've been having some, you and I, a discussion, yours had some conversations about this. A couple of challenges that I have, first of all, the CIC is not coming and asking us for this. They've not arrived in the chambers, they've not discussed their plan, what they would like to do, this is a separate board, the CIC, but the commissioners created that, so, if the commissioners want to do something, and I'm in favor, by the way, of furthering the interest of the CIC, but that's a separate board, and if the CIC has a thought, the CIC should be coming to our board and explaining to us how they plan to use this money, and defend and justify it, as everybody else does with this board. In that regard, I'm in support of promoting some changes within the CIC, part of what we've been talking about is having a college kid do a study, collect the data, blah, 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 that would start in the May-June timeframe, and then the August timeframe. It's a college study, college kid study, well, that's nice, I mean, we're, we're funding a college kid to, almost like a charitable activity, but I have concerns of what the outcome's gonna be, is it something of the quality to make a long-term, good decision for the CIC? I've reached out to a couple of law firms, they have the ability, within a month or less, to be able to professionally answer the questions that we want to have answered, and for the same or less a month, and so, I guess it's up to the board inside what we want to accomplish, if we want the answer, if that's what we're looking for. We can get it done quickly, we can get it done within the same realm of past or less, using a different answer, or using a different approach, but I still have a little angst over us steering the CIC, which may be what we want to do, and I'm not steering, we set up the CIC, the commissioners.
Well, you said, you said that there's an executive, there's a group of officers, and you actually all sit on the CIC, I, there's like, I think, 20, 24 members, officers of the CIC, including the commissioners, and I'm on there, and a number of other local...
But, if we, the, the point being, or the point that I want to make, and it'll be the last point that I'll speak on, if we, the commissioners, decide that we want to provide input to the CIC, and we shouldn't give them the encumbrance, we should keep the money, we should go do our investigation, go to the CIC and say, you know, based on what we've discovered, here's some recommendations for us to move the CIC forward, we have the ability and the authority to do that. If we're gonna do it with the CIC, then they ought to be a part of the equation, and be here discussing with us what they're saying, what their objectives are, and with that board to accomplish it. Right now, we're in kind of this weird space here, where they've not really come here representing, we're acting like they want this, but there's nobody here representing the CIC in that discussion, and so I have them a little discomfort with that.
So, let me just, I depend on this one, so, my, my position is a little bit differently, is that I think that, I think that trying to, not taking a shot at any of these law firms that you're talking to, I think that basically, that the whole thing is, is I've never seen an attorney or a law firm get anything done quickly, and I think that it's going, and I think that the best judge of future performance is past performance, and whenever we've gone this route, we've paid a certain amount to get them in the door, and it's costed us six times that amount, and I'm not about to go down that route, I'll tell you right now. So, my position is this, is that whether they're here representing or not, on this issue is, is that I just spent an hour's time this morning discussing this again, in addition to probably four or five other hours of being involved with, you know, the players on that side of it, that I feel comfortable to basically make a move to, you know, to, to, to ask for a motion, to go ahead and, and move forward with that $6,000 to be placed into the CIC, and activate them to research this, this department, and I would ask for a motion on that.
So, looking forward to pass the motion, let me comment on the work, both of these law firms have agreed to cap their fees, so they're always...
Yeah, and what's gonna say is, is that they're gonna cap their fee, and you're gonna get basically 30%, and I don't feel comfortable with that.
Well, I, you know, I've spoke to Anita and some of the players in MS, and, you know, I think, you know, you know, I wish Anita was here today to kind of discuss what we had talked about last week, but she feels pretty strongly that, I mean, we're gonna need a legal review of what the findings are coming out of this, this intern anyway, I think, so, you know, it's, I understand what you're saying as far as getting the lawyers in there to do this, but I think this can be accomplished, you know, with Anita's oversight, and bringing in this intern, and then still having a legal review of it, you know, we can, we can discuss this further, if you guys are uncomfortable with it, or... I don't feel, I don't feel strong enough to dig my heels in, but it is, it is what it is, the reality is, we have a college kid who's unproven, who has one past example of something that he's done, and he's gonna be doing the study, at the end of the day, we're gonna have a college kid studying, and so, we're making a professional decision based on a college kid's study.
But, pardon me, so, I, my understanding from Anita is that Ken Krosik is gonna spend a significant, I mean, he's an attorney, he's the one that has all this institutional knowledge, CIC, he's gonna be spending a lot of time with this guy, more, you know, someone who knows more than anyone else.
So, I mean, again, I talked to the kid, he's a nice kid, and he's got, he's got some, an interest in doing something, again, it's, it is what it is, if Ken wants to spend all this time, what isn't he doing? So, there's a lot of questions, and I've talked to Anita, and linked about this too, like...
I think what Anita was saying about the time being spent on this, like, she was really talking about this involving, if we're gonna have a law firm do what this kid is gonna do, it would cost $50,000, you know, she, this is gonna be going out into different areas, doing interviews, documenting this, so, when we walk away, we have a template going forward. I still think, at some point, you're gonna have to have legal review of this, whether it's this Ken Krosik, or if we have to have one of the others come in and do, you know, you know, tie up the loose ends real quickly with what this young man comes up with. Right, I think he's gonna be more, do it, more hands-on as far as research. But, I think at the same time, besides this CIC, I mean, obviously, this is a four-month, you know, I think, what is it, a four-month internship or something, we may be able to have, in talking to Anita, have him do some other things besides this CIC, so, you know, Anita feels strongly about it, I don't, I'm not, again, I don't have a huge dog in this fight, one way or the other, but, and I, you know, when we first brought this up, I kind of flip-flopped back and forth, and I agreed with Skip as far as, you know, let's get the pros in here, knock this thing down real quick, but, you know, Anita feels pretty strongly that this is the direction to go, she is the director, I'm gonna support our employees' decisions.
Yeah, but she's not the director of the...
Well, she's, she's, this is gonna be, she's gonna be the one babysitting this, I think.
She's the director of our development, she's not the director of CIC.
She's not, but she's gonna be, she's really the one that stepped up and is kind of, as of right now, you know, unless we're gonna do it, the three of us...
The CIC is gonna make a commitment to follow through on this, I mean, that's, again...
Well, these are the questions...
Part of the angst that I got is, this is kind of where, it's not...
But, we gotta go explore these things now, I mean, these are the questions we're having, these are the questions we're having.
But, if the CIC's not here at the table, and we're giving them $6,000 to go do something, we're talking about it, we're discussing where this is gonna go, the CIC's not at the table, it's their responsibility, we give them $6,000, once we've given them the $6,000, it's on them to do something, what is that something? What do they understand about what this is? And so, again, I'm not gonna fight you guys on it, if you want to pass the motion, I'll, I'll go along with it. If you want to pass the motion, I'll go along with it. But I just, I don't think it's the best answer. I think the best answer is either, let's do it here internally, or let's get the CIC involved so that they understand what their commitments are to this whole program, and how it's all going to work. And we're going to hire a college kid. Let's just be honest about what the outcome of that's going to be. We can hire the professionals, or we can hire a college kid backed up by professionals, and, you know, roll the dice and see how that comes out. And, you know, again, that's what it is. But I know that that's what Anita wants. I'm not necessarily comfortable that that's the best answer, it's either the best answer I want, but, again, you know, I'm going to...
She's, I think she's had a conversation with the CIC members. I mean, Anita's involved in the CIC, it's been pretty intensive years, because the CIC has the employees, so a lot of the administrative work gets done, you know, the periodic dinners they have promoting economic development, that's known by Anita's staff, and the CIC pays Anita's department a very small amount of money for all the work that's being done. And I think that's part of what the study's supposed to determine over time. Administratively, what do we do to make the CIC a little more robust over time?
Yeah, I think this is a good start. So do you want to, what county do you want to move forward with?
Well, I guess I would just need a motion to go ahead and direct this office to create a warrant to pay the CIC and have them handle that, if that's what you're going to get this back. Or if you're not comfortable with that, then just push off. Just, I think Anita was looking at the availability in some way, and determined how enough he has other things he can be doing this summer if we're not going to employ him for this project.
So, I'm not sure if we're going to do this, so to approve...
Expenditure of $6,000.
To the community improvement corporation to initiate this study?
Yeah.
Okay. So there's a motion. I know Ralph made a motion initially.
Did Ralph make a motion?
He made a motion initially.
I think he was asking for a motion.
I'll second that.
So a motion, one?
Yes.
Motion approval?
Yes.
Yes. So that motion's approved, and then the other issue was, there's been a lot of discussion about changing the concealed carry law. This, you've already taken the action to make the required changes in how weapons can be stored in vehicles in our employee parking lot, in company attendant parking lots. I mean, the next question is, there is talk that there are some counties that can all go ahead and make changes to allow for concealed carry within the buildings, and that's not as simple as just taking the sticker off the door, you have to replace the current sticker that prohibits it with some other sticker that kind of sets up the parameters of how concealed carry weapons can be used.
That's not accurate.
Okay.
And so, the reason that I say that, is I reached out to John Eglon and Sarah Lott right yesterday. When they passed this law, they had an intent. Our prosecutor, as she read the law, seemed to think that, and she's reached out for an attorney general opinion, to find out what the opinion is. I reached out to Sarah and John yesterday and said, what did you guys intend to do? So Medina's feeling was that it, and they just opened this up, they removed the sticker from the door. That was what they believed it to mean.
That's what they meant, just take the sticker off?
They just took the sticker off the door. So the difference is, for the sake of the folks in the audience, either taking the sticker off the door, which is what some people read that law to me, the other, well, Laura's opinion, and I think she's probably an exception at this point in time, is that it means, leave the sticker on the door, just modify it to allow people with concealed carry to carry. So I asked Sarah and John to do, to their legislative affairs folks, to give us back their intent. What did you intend us to do? And so if we move forward on this, do we take the sticker off the door? Do we modify the sticker? What did you, the lawmakers, intend when you passed this law? And so they said they would give back to me on that.
So I guess there's really no action then at this time?
Yeah, I got, I have a question about it. You know, there's been discussion about, you know, I don't have, I can wrap my head around the, you know, public carrying concealed weapons into the buildings, I forgot that, but as far as the policy of having employees carrying, you know, what, I mean, what did Medina, what did they do with that?
Yes, that they said that, and you can, feel free to reach out to Adam Fredericks, he was taking the lead on this. They were fine with employees carrying, and they didn't provide any policy relative to their employees.
Really?
They're saying people who carry are responsible people, they had to get certified, they had to go through a process, understand what the law says, and so therefore, they're going to comply with the concealed carry law. Now, some of us have talked, and I think internally here, we've talked, I've talked to Linda Brerhenny and some others about a potential policy, if we did, if we did concealed carry, which I'm in favor of, I'm on record to say that, I'd like to see a policy, and we have the authority to say no to our employees through policy. Once you open the, take the sticker off the door, let's say that's what it is, then anybody can carry, that includes our employees, unless we have a policy kind of being that. And so if we create a policy kind of being that, then we can say things like, it has always got to be under control in your body, or in a lockbox in your desk, or where it can never be out of control, that limits our liability. We can have folks sign a waiver that says, if you are carrying, then it is on you. The county is not responsible for anything that happens. And by the way, the record shows statistically that it's not likely something's going to happen. There's concealed carry in a lot of other states, Texas, K-1, and you just don't see problems with it. And so we can create policies to mitigate our liability and our risk within the employee ranks, and then allow employees to carry. And by the way, I did have a conversation, multiple conversations with JFS, there was some motion around JFS, potential people that they're dealing with and so forth. And so I met with their entire staff, plus I met with their more vocal part of their staff, just to do a follow-up and find out where they were coming from. And by the nature of the kinds of folks that are hired into JFS, just ideologically, they're opposed to firearms, set aside any other thing that's going on.
Well, I think, I've talked to them also, and there's quite a few that are concealed carry holders that are there, that are not in favor of having it at JFS. So I don't know if that comment is 100% correct, but, you know, you can kind of categorize a group of people, you know, I don't know what you want to say, but there is quite a few over there. I am myself a supporter of the concealed carry. I'm actually going to pick up my third or fourth renewal today, actually, I've got to go pick it up. So I'm in favor of concealed carry too. I just, I think, you know, moving forward, we need to tread lightly and also think carefully before we just start tearing the stickers off the door and listen to our employees. I don't, I haven't seen a whole lot of people coming to me, employees, saying, you know, I want to carry a gun to work. But I've heard quite a few saying they don't want their guns at work.
I've had a lot of employees tell me.
Well, I have, so, but that being said, in talking to some police officers, one of the issues that had come up, if there was ever an incident, God forbid, you know, how do you tell who's the good guy and who's the bad guy? You've got a room full of everybody's has guns, if something were ever to happen. That is a concern. I've talked to law enforcement about it. It's a reality. I'm not going to argue the merits of the law, you know, whether you believe in it or not, the law is the law, but we can control our universe here in being thoughtful and respectful to our employees' concerns. It's more than just my belief. I mean, if it was just my belief, I would probably just take all the stickers down and just everybody have at it, but, you know, I'm trying to take them, you know.
Eat mine!
Yeah, you know, but, so, well, you know, I just, you know, I'm trying to be respectful of people's workplace, you know, if they feel that strongly, and if people, I guess the question that I'm having is, if we're that concerned about our safety coming...
They're not going to stick those stickers anywhere.
Yeah, and if we're that concerned about our safety coming to work, we're having the wrong discussion. We should be talking about security, we should be talking about staff, we should be talking about, you know, metal detectors, locked doors, one-way in, one-way out, monitored, but I don't think there's a real concern for, at this point, you know, I mean, we've had a tragic incident here in Jogga County, but, you know, that could have been prevented, I think, maybe if, or maybe not, but, but, you know, I don't, I don't see the huge demand that, I mean, I'm not going to fight the law on this thing, but for right now, I'd still like to, I'd like to talk to, you know, if we can talk about it and come to an agreement on which buildings, or if we just say none of the buildings, or we pick and choose, you know.
So, back to JFS for a second, because I didn't complete my thought on that. After talking to them, I was, to your point, that I'm very sensitive to our employees and what they're thinking and so forth and so forth, I had already told them when I left, for the time being at the very least, JFS will be off the table, in my mind, because of their concerns. Now, you're right, there are a few people that conceal carry, not the majority of JFS by an stretch of imagination, but I've had a number of employees, in fact, there's one department in particular that continues to ask me, when are we going to get this done? And I'll force them out to you at some point, and I'll see if I'll go and have a conversation. But Sheriff Hilloran knows, because I reached out to him, relative to our employees, and said, to your concern about, how do we know who the bad guys are? In the school system, there's training. And so teachers and administrators who have firearms in the school system have a training of the faster training. And that's a three-day training regimen. It really covers a lot more, you know, how to deal with kids that are shot, and how to get them to shoot, and so on and so forth. But I asked Sheriff Hilloran, you know, if we were to offer such training, and maybe as an addendum to our Alice training, what might that be? And I was wanting to further that conversation with him, to say, you know, to talk about our employees, so we could offer some training to our employees, which would include, if you're in a difficult situation, God forbid, and law enforcement shows up, I mean, I know what I'm going to do. The minute law enforcement shows up at the door, if I've taken a bad guy down, I'm putting my hands up and locking up the door, dropping my firearm. But, but the training can include responses like that. In my concealed carry class, we did cover that content. We did cover, you know, what happens if you're in a bad situation, what's the legal implications, what's going to happen if law enforcement shows up, and all these kinds of things we talked about, too, that nothing's perfect, and, you know, but, I mean, you just don't see, I mean, we're beating this dog all up. The reality is, if we pass concealed carry today, I believe this, maybe it's not true, it's not likely we're going to have many more people carrying than we have today. I mean, it's just, you know, it's uncomfortable, you've got a gun in your head, you get, you know, it's up against the chair all the time, so it's not likely that we're going to carry anyway, but it is a right, it is a law now in the state of Ohio. We do have an opportunity to allow our citizens to keep themselves safe, and so, anyway, that's something. But I'm going to hear back from John and Sarah and see what the lawmakers intended when they pass that law, and then we can have a conversation again.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think it's something we, you know, move towards, you know? I don't think we have to be the first county to jump in, you know, let's make sure we're not making any rash or mistakes.
Can I be brutally honest, because I'm usually not?
No.
You're not?
I'm generally fully aware.
And so, we have one of the guys here at the table who happens to own a gun store. And so I've heard some feedback from some folks that, since Ralph is a red store owner, it might not look, I for one, I don't know what Ralph's thinking on this, I won't tell him what to do, but I'm willing to let him off the hook relative to that if he wanted to abstain, you know, that way it removed, removes any of it. And so I just want to put that out there, I mean, if Ralph wants to be involved in the discussion, God bless him, but I...
My position is pretty much, you know, carbon copy of what Tim said. I just, I don't think we need to be the first, first dog to cross this finish line in this race to get this figured out, but, you know, let's see what shakes out, and, I mean, everybody knows I'm pro-gun, but it's just, I just think that right now, there's just a lot of different emotions, a lot of different opinions, and I think that time is on our side right now, just kind of wait, and it hasn't, it hasn't been broken for the last, you know, however many years this has been going on now, since the CCW law with these county buildings. I haven't seen a huge outcry of, you know, people being scared or whatever, and, you know, the buildings with the courts, sheriff's has security in. You know, right now, I think that just kind of keep our powder dry and see what happens.
Okay. We'll agree to reconvene. So, Laura's going to get her feedback from you.
I'd be interested to hear what the intention of the law is.
Yeah, I mean, I was confused as I was talking to the lawyer, and then I talked to a couple of other counties that are working on it, Columbia County, Medina County, but we're clearly not the first dog to cross the line yet. And other counties are already thinking about this, and they're, they're already doing it.
And some will just not do it, you know, we know which counties are not going to do it.
The Bay Harbor County's...
Yeah, you know, Columbus, you know.
Columbus County.
Yeah.
We already know the, but, I mean, with that said, I mean, it really means, I don't think it's a real change, real impact.
All right. One other thing, recall here a couple of weeks ago in the financials, we had a purchase order that we approved as part of the financials, for our building department to buy a new fodder scanner for doing, it allows you to print out, they actually, papers on rolls, you can print out long drawings, and you can also scan drawings, so you don't have to have as many drawings up in, taking up space in the shelf, you can scan them and have them online. So they had, they had brought, the vendor brought this machine in for them to try, and they have for some time, and they're very satisfied. And then the planning commission approached the members, the planning commission board to consider buying similar machine, and when that came through financials, you guys correctly raised the question, you know, we're looking at two, you know, both these machines are around a little below or a little above $8,000. So I said, we hold off, actually, making the final purchase on the building department until we do the research. While we did the research, Dave Dietrich and actually Jerry Morgan, who has a similar machine, it's a couple of years old, actually, it's probably five years old, went down and saw the machine that the building department has. It turns out, well, these two machines are fairly close in price, the one that the building department had is substantially, it's a bigger machine, it's a more capable machine. And both Dave Dietrich and Jerry agreed that that machine could do everything that the, it was a cannon that the planning department had, it could do everything that the cannon could do, the one the building had, it was a recoil. So I'd like to go ahead and tell the building department, go ahead and complete that purchase by that, and for the time being, I think the planning commission, and this is a planning commission's decision, obviously, the fact that the building department's going to have that machine in Alice, it's kind of a long walk down there, because Jerry Morgan has a similar machine, more resources, they can access while the employee outside, and if there's some thought toward consolidating these offices where they may be in close proximity, there's no sense to buy a second expensive machine.
So, yeah. Okay. So would you take action?
No, no, I just, I'll just, I'll tell them to go ahead and put the actual voucher in the financials, financially, to go ahead and complete that purchase.
So do we get to use it too?
Sure.
So do you, do you have to shuffle around any, are you going to shuffle around the offices then, or do they all stay in there the same?
Well, no, I think, you know, this ultimately, you know, as the board, you have to decide on moving office spaces, maybe bring the building department to be closer in price than the planning community development, that's kind of what we're looking at, and if that happens, then that machine is very convenient to everybody. So, I mean, part of that is, I think, the planning commission has to have a discussion on organization, how that might work with the planning, the planning employees versus the other employees, the community development, and the building department. So that'll be, I think, the next conversation, we just have to bring up maybe the planning commission.
Okay. And then the only other question I have was, is when is the deadline then for those applications? The RFQ stuff?
The, actually, we have, we had, there's two RF, there's two requests for quotes that we have out there. One is on the newsletter and social media and website, we've already got some of those in-house, we should have the rest goes in this week. The, the request for proposals on the feasibility study, based on what we put out, and expecting, we should be getting those in by the end of next week, and we'll be filing up the four firms we invite to respond to that. So we should have that in front of us.
Good.
Okay. I think that's right. So do you have a moment?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, or you guys good?
Good.
Okay, John, real quick, for the meetings, we have a planning commission meeting next week at 7:30 in the morning across the parking lot here. We have our meeting right after that, Skip will be, he's kicking his heels on... Um, Skip will be, uh, is kicking his heels on Friday at five twelve this month. No way after?
Yep.
And, uh,
I'm at any of those.
I'm sure you'll find a way to be down there a little, so.
I'll be.
So, other than that, I, that's promotion to adjourn.
Promotion?
Good job, Walter. You stayed by most of the Really good. Are we gonna talk about
Oh, today.
She's gonna be impressed from this.
Oh, this is, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, good.
You guys have a good week.
Thank you.
You too.
You too.
Then you make college, and then you be coming home and saying, Dad, I have a boyfriend.
Oh, no, no. Oh, you're calling her, you're getting her.
They, a lot of those people put out a really high Like that's, like that's, we go to, they're always gonna make my, that's, he's, so
Yes, well, I
They don't want us to have any, you know, you're finally forward prices, you know.
She didn't start off very far.
And that's, that's what we go, I said, is if I can, you can sort of discount it, you know, a thousand dollars. You know, a lot of times, I feel very down, or, or, or they're making the money, it's on the order, you know, it's on the top, you know.
And then, and then we're talking about the bike dad, you know.
Well, Tim was talking about it. I first came there, like, I don't know, last thing happened. She was
Pretty sure she could see.
I ended up all the way around, I was budgeting, you know, I was budgeting your budget, but she was, you know, she was I can tell, she was a little shaken, I think, like, I didn't know.
I actually, sometimes it's probably just shock to the person, you know, if you come over, something like that. It's not, it was good to be
But, you know, she might, since she went, you know, mine, I'm impressed, I'm impressed, and we go on shopping, you know, it's
Essential, purchasing, yeah, that machine, I'd have been a real, it's really hard to force a location purchase. That's 'cause this year, don't they have a, for my, you know, individual, you know, and because, you know, she is my So much competition, she was talking about, there's so many, you know, it's not, you know.
You know, she, like, they all can change, you know, one, like, I need, you know, faceless, but, oh, they kinda seem like, it's got, uh, she, she had a late transition to drive, you know, like, a guy getting rid of a tower, and that would be, it's like, it takes you away, you know, can holders and stuff, right? Just like, when they, nobody's gonna progress.
Yeah.
And that's, she was like, she was really worried, you know, they got to where, you know, buying and shopping, and it's like, it's something about Yeah, it's a recoil, and this kind of gets, you know, because they're not, they're
It, it's open. Yeah. I don't know if that's, yeah.
College is dying, it's already invested, they're big, it's
I don't think anybody has that.
I've never caught one, I've been
That's like, if, that's the will, you know, just realize, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Let's, let's, we got it, we got it.
You know, we have, we have a recoil here.
Five, six, one, color, we have a high body, colored, but it's, so I wanna, I wanna
Now you start seeing the press.
We're not backing in.
You know, see what happens.
Just think of that, you know, now you're fishing there, but you're feeding the other ones, and, you know, those people, they'll be well fed.
Yeah. So my guess is, you know, those guys are all, there's no
And then, the other machine, the copier, it's just black, because at the time, it was like, one, zero, zero, five, five.
I mean, Derek, I was a little more Electra, that's all they talk about. I think, I think, we have, we have
That was a long procedure, all those employees. And that price on that one now is up to like forty, forty.
Right, so they, yeah, do this.
They're always trying to destroy them, they need to buy another one, it's a little, you keep using that old one, until they jack up the rate, to basically, we can't I, I don't So now, you're back to the two cents a pound, and you say, okay, it's time to buy a new machine, too.
Tim, the only reason to buy a machine, pretty, it was less emotional than I normally see how I know, when you see it, guys. Those are deep, yeah, but, those are recoil machines, the one on first, linear
No, so, it was pretty, I mean, there were several points to it, you know, but
Oh, it was a country.
Yeah. She said it was because the size of the crowd, yeah.
No, I bought, I made a mistake.
You know, like, more, the board members, there was more board members, and it couldn't have counted, yeah. I said, oh, and then
I wanted to see that they got on this, this key of Sarah.
She made a request, wants to know where we're at with the, you know, ratification.
Well, at the time, this was four years ago.
Amendment, or, you know, about them and, and, I'm like, Xerox, you don't even know where She said, where's it at?
It's a hard, yeah, Xerox table, wait.
Never is that, it's
Xerox, Alice, table. This Xerox, we have, you know, you don't, that is Xerox.
We're still a best range.
Yeah, just like, so if I could take that deal apart, back, I would, but
Well, sure, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
By the way, reach out to Joe to tell.
Yeah. Oh, I know, I've talked to, all those guys wanted to do it. I don't understand why they don't.
You said you didn't hear from anybody.
Well, no, Joe told me that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know.
Oh. We didn't.
I'm not sure if that, I don't know.
Okay.
I figure out how. There, go.
Hey, when's tea party meeting? Is it tomorrow?
Hmm?
Tea party meeting?
Yeah, next Monday.
Next Monday.
Oh, next Monday?
Well, there's a leadership meeting next Monday, and then the
Okay.
The formal meeting, I, I'm not sure when it is.
That's the one at West G Library?
Yeah.
That's next Monday?
Yeah.
Okay.